Good evening, welcome to the school committee meeting of June 20th, 2018. I'd like to remind everyone this meeting is being recorded and is also being broadcast live, so keep that in mind. I would ask you to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming. I'm gonna jump around a little bit this evening for sake of saving some of the personnel in this room some time in getting them back into the district in the morning. An entertainer motion to approve the minutes of June 6th, 2018. So moved.
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining. One abstention. Okay, Mr. Rogers, we have an ongoing conversation with Mr. Rogers about the scoreboard. He has some new information for us, so have at it.
I'm hoping this will be much quicker than last time. So, last time I was here, I told you that we had the one donation already in place for our scoreboard project, and we had one scoreboard bid that we had. Since that time, we've had a few more bids, a few more companies have presented, and the best one that we have, the one that I thought we were gonna go with, actually doesn't play live video unless we do a huge upgrade to it. So, the one that we wanna go with is a Dectronics scoreboard, which you have in front of you, which, as Bob had referenced last time, the video monitor was kind of on the smaller side. This one's gonna be close to nine feet high, eight and a half feet high, and 16 feet wide. Much better quality board. Dectronics is represented by Scoreboard Enterprises in Mansfield, so if you have any problems, they come right over. They're really probably the most respected organization in the area. The downside to it is it is much more expensive, but, you know, we have 10 teams alone at Whitman Hansen that will use this scoreboard, 10 programs, in addition to all the youth teams. I think it's a good investment. There are six sponsorship panels on it that I fully expect to be able to sell. I'm anticipating being able to bring in at least $60,000 in revenue on those panels over a period of time. We will also sell advertising revenue on the video monitor, and Christine Sukoe and I had talked about approaching the towns, about them contributing just a little bit because it's the, it's a capital project, and that scoreboard is, was deemed to be needing to be replaced. So, even if they kicked in just a little bit of the project, maybe even $20,000 of that, and the rest of it would be from the fundraising. So, all, the reason why I'm here tonight is I'm just wanted you guys to be able to vote to give Christine the authority to enter into a lease agreement so that we don't pay all the costs up front. The scoreboard's gonna cost close to $100,000. But you got, it will not come out of the school's budget at all. It'll be through the fundraising that the panels that are on the board, and then through fundraising during the different events. The other thing that's gonna be neat about this scoreboard, this video, we're gonna be able to have, for example, one of the classes just approached me about wanting to do a movie night. They don't know it yet, but if I get this up in time, they'll be able to do the movie night with this. And also, part of this project, probably at little to no cost, we're gonna move our sound system to that end of the end zone. If you've ever been to our field, sound system is really poor. Part of the reason is it overwhelms you because it's right over you at the press box. So, by being able to send it out that way, this whole project's gonna make our field be something that will really be user-friendly. And as I mentioned, 10 of our 27 sports use that facility. Lots of kids, lots of community members. I think it's a great investment. So, I'm just asking the committee to give Christine the authority to enter into a lease agreement for this project. It doesn't commit you to any money. It'll all be through fundraising.
An entertainer motion, Bob, but I'm gonna spell it all a little bit different.
Oh, sure.
An entertainer motion from members of this board to have Christine enter into a lease agreement, but before we sign anything, I'd like her to come back to the committee with an exact figure on months.
Bob, can I interrupt you on that? The only reason why that does not work is, I mean, we could do that, but we will not have the score, in order for this to happen, in order for us to have this for the fall, I need to give them the purchase order, like, in the next couple of days. And even with that, it's not gonna be done until late August. It's gonna be pretty close. If we don't enter into the agreement right away, and I don't wanna present, I sound like the, you know, no offense to car salesmen.
I'm not.
But I sound like the guy saying, "If I can do this deal for you today, but I can't do it for you tomorrow." But that is the reality. The other, the other option that we have, because the reality of it is that scoreboard is not working. So, the other option, I have two other options. Number one is I could repair that scoreboard to the tune of about $4,000 or $5,000, and it would get us through another year, and we could push this project off a year. It's kinda throwing, you know, kind of a waste of money because that scoreboard's not good. The other thing we could do is we could replace that current scoreboard with the same kind of scoreboard for about $25,000, $30,000. Exact same scoreboard. The thought process of wanting to move to this is that it, you know, most, you're gonna see most schools that are going through school projects and whatnot going to this. One of the best reasons for it is you can display messages, safety messages, sportsmanship messages. It really will be something that the community will really enjoy, and it'll be great for school culture to be able to have that board. I know it's a lot of money, but again, it's something that we're committed to being able to raise it so you won't have to. And the other thing is, I think that over the long term, we're gonna be able to make this be a revenue generator for us, that we can maybe bring some money into the athletic program for uniforms, which we currently don't fund. Right, yeah, so as I mentioned, we still already have that $25,000 donation that's already there. I have at least one advertiser that has given me a verbal commitment, and I've approached a few others that seem interested. I think that, and I've had several parents that said they're gonna help us sell the advertising. I think we're gonna do okay selling it. I think, I don't think it's gonna be a big problem. I don't know that for sure, but I'm pretty confident. And if it doesn't, I'm committed, as the athletic director, to do fundraising to make sure that we pay it. It's going to benefit, as I mentioned, 10 teams and the youth programs. So, I'm willing to commit to what I have to do to make this work for our kids, for our students.
Bob, ask a question.
Go ahead, I'm just doing the numbers.
Nope, that's fine.
I'm gonna tell them what the lease agreement's gonna be approximately, so go ahead.
Nope, that's fine. Just a couple of quick questions. First one would be life expectancy of it? Any idea what, or any idea how old the board is that we have now?
That board is at least 13 years old.
Okay.
Now, that isn't, that's old technology.
Yeah, right.
And that's like one of the problems. They're telling me that I think we can expect to get 15 to 20 years out.
Okay. And do we have to do any maintenance to it or anything like that?
It comes with a five-year warranty, and they're gonna do five-year, you know, reviews and things like that.
Okay. Do you mind asking if they do an extended warranty?
I can ask, I can ask that.
Sometimes, that's worth it to do it. Right, no, I understand that, but sometimes I might be worth it.
Of the six panels, is that part of the sponsors you, like, one of them?
Yes, each one of those panels that you see there would be a different sponsor.
Chris?
So, just from the finance standpoint, you said, "Enter into a lease," but then the towns would have to kick in potentially 20 years.
Well, they don't necessarily have to. So, I mean, I suppose if they're watching this, they'll say, "Well, they're already committing the fundraising for it." But just on, just kind of like, I feel like that they should be on the hook for at least some of it, because it's a capital project at Whitman Hansen. That's something that they would have to do. Now, we're granted, we're getting something that is really nice. So, we're actually replacing, like, you know, a little compact car with a, with a big, you know, luxury car. So, I wouldn't ask them to, I wouldn't want this to be the whole thing, like, the town wanting to pay for this. But I do think approaching the town to say, you know, whatever figure, you know, Christine and I work on, and hopefully they'd agree to that.
But we're prepared to do this without them?
I'm prepared, correct.
So, this isn't, we're putting the car in front of the horse, we're gonna do it, and then go to them and say, "Hey, it's a, it would be nice."
Correct.
It just could be an option.
Could make a nice argument, but it's not our part.
Right, yeah, right.
Okay.
Mike?
The timeframe to actually have, say, everything went through, the timeframe to get this up and running, what would you?
So, we, so here's what would happen, is if you guys approve this tonight, I would write a purchase order tomorrow for them, and Christine and I would then work on the whole financing part of it. They would put the order in with Dectronics, and they said we could expect delivery of the scoreboard and all the components probably mid-August. Prior to that, though, Ernie and our facilities crew, and Ernie is, because he learns, they learn so much during the baseball, softball project, they're committed to putting the beams up, pulling the wires, so that really when it comes in, it's gonna be a very short project to get it up, because the rest, the infrastructure of it will be done ahead of time. We would do that sometime in July, so that in August, once it arrives, we should have it up. And to me, you know, I can never make a huge, you know, absolute promise, but I think it would be available for the first week of the season, which would be the first week of September.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question.
So, Ellie, I'm sorry.
$100,000 to lease it, and I know that you said that you have a donation of $25,000, and you have one potential advertiser so far that's really interested.
Yep.
I know you said, "If you can't get enough, you'll go to fundraising," but what happens if you really can't get enough, and then it goes to fundraising, and you still can't get enough for that?
Well, the answer to that is, I've raised all that. We've already, we do that already. Like, I do that already. Like, it's something I don't wanna have to spend my whole life doing it, but we can do that. I mean, it's something that absolutely we can raise that money. You know, Bob is already committed to helping, doing the fundraising. I've had several parents do it, and we've raised, Christine could tell you, I, we have a significant amount of money that we've raised already for other things, so it would just be a matter of redirecting some of our resources if we had to. I don't anticipate having to do that, though. Dectronics has done this across the country, these new scoreboards, and they have been revenue makers at virtually all of the schools that have put them in. Because it is, I mean, if you're, it's usually like, when, I'll give you an example. When a business decides to advertise, like, in our yearbook or in our programs, like, for the game, it's really a donation, because not enough people see it to make it to be a valuable investment. This is a value, this is something that, it's not a donation, it's a real advertising investment for that company. If they, if we have 1,000 people at a football game on a Friday night that will be going someplace for dinner after the game, and they can have some, a special on that board that everybody in that stadium is going to see, people are gonna wanna advertise on it.
Now, forgive me, because I can't recall if we talked about this last time. When you do get businesses to advertise on this, what are the contract terms? How long, how much are they gonna?
So, you got, so for all, everything that we come up with, you guys will ratify and approve. The policy is that you guys set the rates and all of that. We will be making proposals that you will then ratify and tell us if that's acceptable or not.
You have guidelines, too, so.
Yeah, guidelines in terms of what can be advertised. Everything would be something that would be, you know, acceptable for our community standards.
Bob, so you're entering, really, if you have $25,000 already, you're planning on putting $25,000 down and entering into a $75,000 lease agreement?
Yes.
Because that's how I figured the numbers. If you enter a lease agreement for approximately five years, the payment is $1,250 a month, roughly, depending on the lease agreement, depending on the credit structure of the lease agreement. If you do it for 10 years, it's obviously gonna be $625 a month, depending on the lease agreement, depending, you know what a bond rating is and...
Yeah, that's what we need to work out, the details, yeah.
Right. I still wanna be involved in the lease agreement. I know that you guys wanna sign it, but we, I don't know. Committing the district to something that we're voting on spending, signing a lease.
Bob, I'm fine with that. I mean, like I said, the other option is, we have to, we just, here's the thing, is we can't get this this year if we don't do this tonight. But we can go ahead and repair the scoreboard and go a year like that and try to do this next year. That's something we can clearly do. So, if you feel more comfortable with that, I am, I am fine with that.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying, I want everybody to know what they're getting. I'm not afraid of any of it, I'm just...
So, let me, let me ask a quick question, and I guess more for you to, I know you wanted to start cutting the PO and stuff tomorrow. How quick is this company able to give you the lease terms? Because my thought would be, is you do a subcommittee that you're on, and like, another one or two people to...
Well, Robbie, Robbie, what will actually happen on the lease? They will offer a lease deal to us, but Christine and I, or anybody, we can shop that. You know, it's just a standard lease agreement, it's just a standard way to finance, something similar to what Chad has done with computers.
Okay.
So, it's really not, it's not something that's really that complicated, it's just a matter of, "Hey, this is what we have, these are the terms that we have."
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, Bob first, then.
Bob?
Yeah, after listening to it, it sounds to me like Chris and Bob have everything pretty much ironed out, and I had, I think I have a lot of faith in their decision as to, it appears they feel it's in the best interest of the school committee. I understand your point of view, but I think if we wanna get that accomplished, I think I would feel good to vote for that tonight, to push it, to push it ahead, instead of maybe wasting the money to repair the old school.
Yeah, repair a board.
It just, it appears to me that this thing seems to be working in the, in the right direction.
You know, the scoreboard, we wouldn't be putting it in the same spot, like, we want it to relocate to a better positioning.
We're gonna move it to the right. We're gonna move it to the right. I mean, like I said, there's all kinds of, like, if we took the current structure and we took that scoreboard off and just put one on there, it would be very cost-effective, and we would have a working scoreboard. But, like, you're shaking your head because you don't like it, and I don't like it, nobody likes it. But that is, if it's just a dollar or cents thing, we could do that. But we're gonna move it to the right of the flagpole so people can see it. And that's why this project's a lot more costly.
So, if we had to push it, and it was delayed, could you still open it, like, mid-season with the new one?
Um, we could, but again, that's gonna add, you know, it's gonna cost thousands of dollars to fix the other scoreboard to get it ready for the season. So, it's just a matter of, do we wanna throw that money there? But we, to answer your question, we can definitely do that. We could do that. We could table this until September, and then maybe we get it in for Thanksgiving or the last couple of games of the season.
Well, what, what is the actual cost to buy this?
Uh, it's a, so for this model...
Not lease agreement, just to buy?
Well, just to buy it is $100,000.
It is?
Yeah. And that, that includes all of the components to it, the, doesn't include the installation, but it includes the wireless controllers, the module for it to do the video, the software that runs it, all of that. They gave me several different proposals. The real good, the best one was about $140,000. So, the cheap, the, the one that was a little bit lower than this was like $92,000, but the board was significantly smaller. This one seems to be the best bang for the buck.
What is the downside of purchasing it versus a lease agreement?
Well, we could purchase it, but I don't really have the money to purchase it right now.
Lease is over time.
So, really, Mike, that's really all that it is. I mean, what could happen in this whole process is if I, in the next month, which is what I'll be working on, trying to sell those, if all of a sudden I have great success, then we might not even, this might not even end up turning into a full lease.
Yeah.
Or we might lease it and with non-penalty to pay it off faster.
Yes, at least to own. So, we would own it for a dollar once it, once it...
Just wanted to make that clear, so people...
Yeah, it's an ending lease.
Yes.
It's a five-year end. It's not a continued lease, it ends.
Right.
Yeah, and it could...
It's a scoreboard loan.
Yeah.
Exactly what it is. But, Bob, do you have any estimates or projections as to what you would expect to raise per panel or...
Well, each one of those panels, we're hoping to get between $10,000 and $25,000 for a 10-year agreement for them to be part of our, if you think about it, if it was only $10,000 and they had that there for 10 years, that's only $1,000 a year, to be at hundreds and hundreds of events. But even if we went with that low amount, that's a lot of money, that's, would get us this, that, that means those panels would have generated $75,000 if it's only a $10,000 commitment.
Mm-hmm.
Plus all the additional advertisement...
And all the other additional video advertisements that will be included in it.
Chris?
So, I think overall, this is an absolutely fantastic project. 100% supportive of it. My only concern is the timing and the obligation of the district. So, I know it's tough. We have a lot of financial pressures on us and where we're spending money.
I understand.
And so, you know, as I think about that, that's, that's where I say, "I'm a little bit more leaning towards a pause." I know we may have to put some money into it, but really try and raise the money to the point where we actually have the money and have the ability to maybe purchase it, and we're not, because at the end of the day, the problem, the problem that I'm hearing with this whole discussion is, if we can't raise the money, it's, the district is on the hook. The district is entering into the lease.
I guess, Chris, the reality of that is, if I were to leave, then yes, you guys would be on the hook, but if I'm the athletic director, I'm gonna be raising the money for it, as we've done with lots of different projects that we've had. And one thing I can tell you about the athletic department is we've had to raise money to sustain. In fact, I had to, Christine, I had to give how much money this year to the school to pay...
40,000.
How much?
40,000.
40,000 extra because the school budget didn't meet our needs, so I had to come up with $40,000 for that. So, we will make the money.
I get it, and I respect it.
And I understand, no, and I...
But, but the athletic department is not signing the lease.
Correct.
And we are under a lot of financial constraints as a committee and as a district.
And I will not be, and I'm not offended at all if you guys decide you wanna have that pause. It is just like, the question is, is it a fiscally sound thing to do the pause? But if, if we do it, that's...
It's hard.
I'm completely...
Because the project itself, I think, is a fantastic project.
Yep.
22 cents.
Anyone else? Okay, so an entertainer motion to authorize Bob and Christine to enter into a lease agreement with Dectronics.
Uh, it actually will, will be with Scoreboard Enterprises.
Scoreboard Enterprises. It's a Dectronics sign, that Scoreboard Enterprises. Bar, and anyone else can make this motion if they'd like to, but bar, you already have a commitment of $25,000, correct?
Yes.
For $75,000, that...
That would be good.
Cover it?
Yep.
For $75,000 or less.
So moved.
Okay, any more discussion? Does anyone wanna add into this part for the money to be raised by the athletic department? Into the motion that I just mentioned?
I think that would be good.
For the funds?
Yeah, we can put that in there.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be in there.
Is everybody, you're seeing, you're saying yes, Chris, do you have a question?
And I'll second that. If she's motioning it, I'll second it. To add that in.
I'll add that to the motion that the funds are to be raised by the athletic department.
So, you're gonna vote on the amendment, then you're gonna vote on the...
I'll withdraw the first one. Somebody wanna withdraw the first and the second?
Withdraw.
Second.
The motion will read, Christine, I mean, shall we read it back to me and add what I just said?
Yeah. Motion to authorize the athletic director and the director of business services to enter into a lease agreement with Scoreboard Enterprises for a new scoreboard at the cost of $75,000 fundraising events, via fundraising events by the athletic department. Is that right? I'll tweak it a little bit.
And you making the motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Discussion?
Discussion?
Yeah, so, so I like, so thank you for pushing me in that direction. I like where we're going. So, the question is, logistically, how would that work? So, based upon that motion, are we saying that no matter what, the athletic department is gonna have to pony up?
I would say so.
Yep.
I would say so. And Chris, the other thing I would say, I...
No, no, because I, because I think, I like what you said, and I have no, I trust what you said, but we have to make sure that we're doing it the right way.
And I'm with you.
So, I think that gets us there.
100%.
From my perspective.
And just if I could add something to, I know, Bob, you talked about possibly it being a capital request that would go to the towns. This is nothing they have ever seen on the capital matrix. So, I think I'd be much more comfortable as well with the idea that the athletic department would be responsible. I think if we were to come up with, "Oh, in addition to all these other capital expenses we have, we also need about 20K for a scoreboard," that might not go over very well.
Anyone else before I move to the vote?
No, I think we could manage with fundraising.
I do tell. I just wanna make sure that it doesn't have the wrong feel.
No, but you have to, you have to have our ballot, you have to have a check in here to make sure we're not on the hook.
That's what I'm saying.
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. Thank you. It already takes so much of your time.
Okay.
Sorry to take your time.
I'm gonna move the superintendent's report, but I would ask that the superintendent do the introduction of the new principal first, and then please move to Maquon School closing and transition.
Okay, happy to do that. We are delighted this evening to introduce you to Dr. Darlene Foley, who will be the new principal of the Duval School. I don't know if Jeff wants to come up and say a few words as well.
Now, this is, Darlene's our last solidification of the team, so we are, it's been a long month and a half or so. Some great candidates, but I think we've got the cream of the crop, and we're gonna get together the first week of July, when everybody's around, and start drafting our plan for, for opening and, and next school year. But I thought Darlene, our interactions have been wonderful. She's already been over to Maquon and Indian Head, looking at some of our special programs that are transitioning. That was the first thing out of her mouth. "When can I see the kids that are coming to my school?" And then we went over to Duval. So, I think it's a good, fresh start already.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm really excited to be working at Duval. I feel that it's already a very special place, and I've met terrific people, both at Duval and at the other two schools and at the super, you know, central office, and I feel very supported already, and I feel welcome, and I really appreciate that. I think we're gonna have a great year.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, the next thing we're going to be talking about is the Maquon School closing and transition. Just to give you a quick overview, we spent some, we've been meeting weekly. On Monday, we toured the preschool area, very excited about the work that's being done there. If you have a chance, get Ernie to take you through, Jeff can take you through, just to get a sense of what's going on there. They're working on the playground, they're gonna have to do some work to level that off. That's working. I'm sure you did not miss the fact, they're doing something with the road out in front. Next week, now that the students will be gone and have finished their exams, the trees that are in that area will be taken down, and then the loop will go around. We are indebted to the town of Whitman for their dedicated effort in getting on top of this project, and what they've done as an in-kind contribution has saved this project And what they've done as an in-kind contribution has saved this project an awful lot of money. So I'm very happy with the work from the DPW and the things that Bruce Martin and those folks have worked so closely with Ernie. We also spent time going over to Indian Head School. The new restrooms are just about finished, they just look fantastic, they were putting the tiles in. Maureen McKenzie's freezer is up and running. The music room has been converted into two good-sized classrooms. The tech, uh, technology room also will be converted. Very excited that that's moving along as well. You will see pink bins everywhere you go. The Maquon folks are getting ready to move over to Indian Head. Ernie and Beth Wilcox went through each classroom, worked with teachers in terms of what was going to the famous Ernie Sandland yard sale. And what, it's going to be a big one. And then what was actually going over to the Indian Head School. We've also been working on what goes from Indian Head School to the Hanson Middle School. The one issue that did come up was an issue of chairs. So my question was, what are they sitting on now? And they said chairs, and I said, okay, so let's look at what we have. But ultimately, if there's a need for more chairs, that will probably come back to the board for your discussion. On Monday evening, we held a meeting, transition meeting, for parents of students who are going in from the fourth grade into the fifth grade at the Indian, at the Hanson Middle School. And then also the students who are transitioning from the Maquon School to the Indian Head School. Bill Tranter led the first part of the meeting, went very well, took folks down to see the area of fifth grade. And then the second part meeting, we addressed the questions and concerns of the parents of the Maquon School students. One of the issues that came up, which is why we have some folks here this evening, was really the issue of open house. Traditionally, Whitman Hanson, it started the first year I was superintendent, open house was moved to the night before school was to open. Prior to that, it had been after the opening of school. The principals who brought that forward, Elaine White and Ellen Stockdale, believed that it was better for students to have an opportunity to see the school right before it started, that that might help with some anxiety before the first day of school. It's worked very, very well over the years. However, this year, it's a little bit different because we have the changes and the transitions that are going on. In May, and a number of people are here this evening who went to that meeting, Jeff, Chad, Christine, I was there, and a number of other administrators, met with Maquon and Indian Head staff because we had been given a list of questions and concerns from Kevin Kafka that our teachers had about the move. And we probably spent a good sixty minutes answering questions. One of their biggest concerns was open house. They had a significant amount of anxiety with the pressure of moving classrooms from one location to another, and also within the building, and not being ready for open house. And I think we heard this with a lot of angst and anxiety. So their request was, could they possibly move open house to another date? That discussion, decision, discussion went on for a period of time to see what other options might possibly be out there. Their reason for concern, and we were talking about it today, was they know their rooms have to be ready for the first day of school. But when their rooms are ready for open house, they want the bulletin boards up, they want to give the best possible look at a classroom. And I think there were concerns that it wouldn't look the way they wanted it to look, and they would not feel as comfortable with it. So that's where that conversation came up. When it did come up on Monday evening, I was naive because I believed that parents already knew this. So when I saw that parents didn't already know this, I was surprised. I don't think that's anyone's fault. We have a big transition going on with Dr. Wilcox leaving and going to Hangum, and with Jill Cottrell coming to us from the Cape. I think that's been one of the challenges here. And Jeff, I don't know if you'd like to add anything to this, because you've been just as involved as I have in this.
Part of that, too, came out of that. What, what's an alternative to the traditional open house? So one of the teachers kind of came up with something. In my district, what they do is, the week before, kids come in the building, we have under-construction signs all over, and middle school kids walk the students through. And they get to see their classroom, they get to do all these things. So I threw that out, idea out there to Jill. I said, I think parents are going to want to come to school. I think that's a part of it. I think the teachers aren't going to be ready because they're literally box, opening boxes the week before. The, the building might not be turned over or ready for, for, especially at certain classrooms at Indian Head till middle August. We set August 1st for them to be, to be, to go in, take a day during the summer and unpack. We're not sure yet, we're hoping. So to come up with an alternative is something that, that Jill came up with and said, look, we can have the open house the night before. I'll be there, the new assistant principal will be there, new superintendent will be there. We're going to have ice cream. And what I'd like to do is show the students around, have some middle school students or the newly, the students who are moving from fourth grade to fifth grade, or fifth grade to sixth grade, who have been in Indian Head, show the younger students around where they're going to be. Then just kind of showcase the playground. Because I think that's going to be an eye catcher once you walk into Indian Head. And nobody's really going to have that access yet. So I don't know if Jill wants to do a ribbon cutting, or people from town want to do a ribbon cutting, because this is a, a town project. We can showcase that open house that night as a welcome back, welcome to the school, meet the new principal. Your teachers won't be there, they'll be there in mind and spirit, but they won't be there welcome for the next day. And then a week later, and I was thinking about this on, on the way here, because this is what my kids do in Pembroke, is the week later, we go on the 6th of September, and my son and my daughter can tell, tell me where they sit. We sit down and we go through an agenda with the teacher, with my son and daughter there. So it's a little bit different, and it's something we can maybe revert back to next year, depending on, on feedback. Sometimes change is good, sometimes change can be modified. But there will be an opportunity, I think, for students to go, well, I don't think this is going to happen, if, if this is where we want to go to. There'll be an opportunity that, that Indian Head School will be opened up on the 28th. I don't know time yet, I'd like to showcase it, I know Jill spoke to the PTO president. She's already planning a barbecue for that secondary open house, and then doing some ice cream during, during the 1st. So I know there was some miscommunication, or lack of communication, for better terms. But I think it's a, it's a, it's an, it's an opportunity to do something different, because there is some change. I mean, I'll just look at myself, I'm boxing up my office, and it's a voluntary move to go upstairs. And I, I'm having a tough time boxing up everything, and I don't have the stuff in a classroom that somebody's been for twenty years. So give them that opportunity to feel comfortable. My priority on the 27th and 28th for my teachers is to be prepared for students on that Wednesday, to have a welcome back, welcome to our new school, with a lot of energy. And that's my focus, and I know parent concerns and, and anxiety concerns are there. I want to find a balance there, so that kids' anxieties can be relieved, and my staff anxiety can be relieved, because they're also going to someplace new. And they're really going into it over the summer with an empty spot and trying to develop a classroom. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. And I really felt from the staff, it wasn't a, hey, let's try to avoid this, let's try to do it the best we can, and make sure that my room is ready for my showcase. And I don't know, and if you work with elementary teachers, that anxiety is there, it's real, that they want to show the best, their best classroom for parents and for kids, and be ready for kids on that next day.
That's sort of where that all stands at this point. I don't think anything's written in stone. And we certainly understand that there are concerns, but this is a unique year. I think the understanding, as Jeff said, it would be reevaluated, it doesn't, um, to look at in the future.
Well, having lived through that, we were a K-6 system where I taught, and we became a middle school system, a six, seven, eight system. And we had to box up our materials, we had to bring them, store them. And generally, what happened is that the students during the summer would come into the, into the middle school and just get a flavor what the school is. Sometimes the, the, there'd be, what do you call it? A move-up day, where the fifth grades would come in. And then during the summer, they would have a second chance to come in, and new students come in. And then I believe the first open house was approximately about a week afterwards, for the simple reason that it's very difficult to store your stuff, get your stuff, get into a new classroom, and be an elementary teacher, you know, you put up the thousand bulletin boards, um, things on the desk, and so on and so forth. So I, I would certainly support that, um, just to have the teachers not have to be there, that, that traditional way that it's been in Whitman for a long time. I really believe that they would need that extra time. So as a former teacher who lived through that, I would say the more time they have to get themselves prepared, the better. It just, it just makes for, for a much better transition.
And the other one thing that I would suggest, and this is, I had to do this with my own son, is that he had trouble with transitions. So we would call ahead over the summer, and we would go in with him and meet the principal and walk the building separately, instead of en masse.
Right.
Didn't work en masse. So that was something, and I would offer that up to any, any student in the district, if they need that, because it's okay to call up the building principal, we have four new ones in the district, so maybe moms and dads can get to meet that principal too, a little one-on-one, a little one-on-one time, and, and walk the building, get some thoughts. So that's something, if, if you're a parent that has a student that's like, shh, I was really looking forward to that, what am I going to do? We can go that ahead of time, and we can walk through, and we can figure it out. I think a lot of the students know the, the faces. I think this would be different, in my opinion, a little bit, if we were moving Indian Head over to Conley, and it was all new faces, and it was across town. But most of the teachers are moving up, there's going to be very few switches in between, so there should be some familiar faces. Just my two cents. And again, nothing's set in stone, and, and what we don't have here is Jill to kind of come up with an alternative or give her feedback. But this is what she threw out to us, we actually discussed it a couple of weeks ago, we put it in writing the other day, just to make sure there was some a firmness to, to this. And it's something that, uh, this is the plan that we're going to move forward with, unless we need to deviate. And again, deviation is something that I'm, I'm used to as well.
Jeff, would it be a problem, I mean, I'm not sure how, how much teachers have to box up, Bob, you know?
Well, it depends, if you, if you've taught for a long time, you have a lot of things to box up, and you have a lot of things you'll probably say, I haven't used this in four or five years, and to get rid of it. So it's, it sounds easier than what it actually is, believe it or not. So you would, you, you go through your stuff, you get tons of stuff, believe me. And you'd probably start throwing stuff away, saving stuff, box it up. And then they say, okay, the building will, will, will be ready a certain day, it might not be ready that day. So that's in the back of your mind as well. You want to get in there, and you want to get things done, and you might not be able to because of certain things.
I guess my theory is, would it help if we hired someone to help these teachers get this stuff from building to building, so this can be done?
We did hire somebody.
I'm sorry.
We already have, I mean, that, that's already in place.
We've got people-
That's in place.
We hired somebody to move their stuff.
We have-
That's not the problem. Okay, I just, I'm looking for a way to help them make this transition, because I had several phone calls, and people are concerned. Anybody else before I?
Yeah.
Mike?
Moving, Whitman's still going to have their open house the night-
They're doing exactly the way it always has, they don't have the transitions, and decided that they wanted to keep it that way. We gave them the option. I'm going to talk to Karen, she's right here. And she had the option of whatever she wanted, whatever seemed to-
And this isn't a financial issue with the union at all?
It could be, the, the, where the, the piece is, that when you do move someone physically, like we're doing, they do receive an additional personal day. Because we understand, so I mean, a lot of things are in place already, Mike, yeah. So I mean, if they were to come and we do this on that night, and they're asked to come and be there, then that would be their open house. We certainly wouldn't have a second one, or you would have to compensate them in another way.
I just, looking at it, you were saving the district money, Whitman and Hanson. It's just, we sit here, we listen to curriculum coordinators go, Whitman and Hanson have the same education.
Yeah, I mean, this is no mon, I don't think it's monetary at all.
And you know, and I think one of the things, and I, I think I mentioned this to the committee or one-on-one when we were talking, we're going to really try to solidify the district, and I know there's some things that, that we're running separately. Not, in not a way that I like them to run. We have four or three new elementary prin, or two new elementary prin, uh, elementary principals in Karen. They're going to work together, we have two middle school, one new, one returning, and a new high school guy. We're going to try to work together to make sure everything is satisfactory to everyone. This is a unique situation. When, when I found out that the open house was on that Tuesday night, I kind of raised my eyebrow, because that's a, that's a challenge on a teacher. I know, being a teacher, you know, being in here for two days of PD, wanting to go home and get a good night, because the next day is, I don't know, for me, still, I, I don't sleep the night before school starts. Because it's, you're excited, you're anxious, you're nervous, you're this, all the feelings that go through, just like a kid, kid has the same thing. So if we can do a soft opening for the students, and again, trying to focus in on, on something in the school, make them comfortable, and I, I was just thinking about the, the playground itself, that might be a real good draw for them to open up that playground that night, with an ice cream social, meeting the new administrators, and then roll in the door next, and then structuring the open house a little bit differently in the second week of September, and then revisiting it. I know when we met, when I introduced Darlene to the Duval staff, there was a little rumbling about open house there as well. And Darlene's an IT person, and was going to form a Google Doc and send it out as a little survey over the summer to see where people were at, and she's putting together a transition team. But there is a little rumbling too, is this the most, is this working for everyone? It started nine years ago, maybe it's time we revisit. Right now, we're in a state at Conley where Karen wants to do it, and we're in a good spot. We have a new principal at, at Duval, and a new principal at Indian Head. Indian Head's a unique situation, because we're closing a building and moving, moving a lot of folks. And I think Bob's point is on, is on point. I'm hoping, because they asked me, is it going to be open August 1st? Yes, we're hoping all the classrooms are going to be there, Ernie's focusing SJ Services on the cleanliness and the building construction of, of Indian Head. Hopefully, it'll all be all set. And then they're going to come in and move, and do things. And knowing the teachers that we have, ninety percent will probably be ready to go. But maybe not to the extent of what they want to showcase to the community at that point.
Chris?
So I think there's, so to me, there's two different issues here. There's the, there's the normal open house that occurs on a normal year, and then there's this year, right? So this year is not a normal year, where I think everyone recognizes there's a lot going on. There might be some twelve-hour things that have to happen. So I think for this year, doing something fantastic. But I am a huge proponent of that open house the night before. I think doing, doing what's best for kids. Everyone's focused the night before school, from a parent and a student standpoint, is school. But there's nothing else on the calendar, nope, there's nothing else going on, everyone is focused on school the next day. And I think, you know, getting everyone together in that environment, it's, it's always been awesome. And I've talked to folks within the district and other districts, I have colleagues, you know, they tell me about their open house two weeks into it. And they're like, oh, you do it the night before, that's, that's awesome. You know, second week, it's football, basketball, baseball, band, you don't get the same engagement. So-
Good point.
That's my piece, I, I'm interested to hear what other folks have to say.
Chris? Yeah, so, I guess I'm not completely understanding the concerns that are brought up. It sounds like a pretty reasonable solution to a situation we have at hand, and particularly allowing people to come in during the summer, and if, if there's any anxiety concerns or like that, I just feel like I might be missing, uh, what the concerns that were brought up.
Chris, I think it's the opportunity for the students to meet the teacher the night before. If the teachers aren't required to come the night before, some will come, some won't, then some students may meet their teachers and some won't. And I think that's the underlying concern. Darlene has a-
Meeting at Duval, I did investigate, I talked to Julie, and Duval Open House will stay as planned the night before. So I didn't want anybody hearing on cable to be worried that that might change, so, thanks.
Okay. Ellie?
The problem is not having teachers there for open house that, for the children to meet, right? So what if those teachers that can't be there, that's just a thought, have like a little, like a, have them make like a poster board, here's my picture, and here's a little bit, you know, something fun about me type of thing? If they can't be there, that, that would-
Yeah. A real option, I mean, we can play around, this is one solution, came up with a solution, a concern came up for parents, want to hear the voices of the parents, and now we're trying to brainstorm solutions that could, that could work for everyone. I think it's a unique circumstance, and it's a, it's a situation we can brainstorm and have a whole discussion, because that's important for our daughter.
I know my daughter, in years past, being in Whitman Hanson, would receive a letter from her teacher over the summer, just the teacher introducing him or herself, saying, you know, this is who I am, I'm so excited to, you know, have you in my classroom type of thing. Maybe they could do that as well instead.
Anyone else on the committee before I open it up? Please give us your name and- Yeah.
Like town meeting.
Kind of sort of. Step right up to the microphone to us, whoever's watching.
Can I move it?
You're good.
Um, so my name is Melissa Alkovic, and I am a resident of Hanson. I have a, um, son who is going into first grade, and our youngest will be going to preschool. So we are actually very involved in a lot of the changes, because we will be moving one from Maquon to the high school, and one from Maquon to the Indian Head. So I think, you know, hearing everything that everybody said, we heard stuff on Monday night, and now from Mr. Simonak, okay. It looks a little different than the way it's written. I think as, um, as a parent, it, just having, having the opportunity for my child to meet the person, that they will be spending the rest of, you know, the next hundred and eighty school days with the night before, relieves a lot of anxiety. They know who that point person is going into the school year, you know? I know that when I put him on the bus, he, he will be going, he'll hopefully feel a little bit more comfortable knowing that he's going to a particular classroom with a particular face that will be greeting him and being there. I also want to say that, so I am a former teacher, I taught for twelve years, and I have done both the moving of a classroom within a building, and moving a classroom to another building. So I'm very privy to the, the, the amount of feelings that teachers are having about this. But I also think that there is so much change happening for Hanson Elementary students, so much change. We're, we're losing an elementary school. We're, we're losing a principal, gaining a new principal. We're also gaining a new assistant principal. We're opening a new playground, there's, we're getting a new superintendent. There are a lot of changes that are facing families and students in this, in, in Hanson in particular. And I just, you know, I, I heard about change is good, and I agree with that, but I'm not sure that so much change at one time is good. So having one thing that's stable, continuing the open house as is, with the teachers coming that night, you know, I don't think any of the parents, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I don't think any of the parents expect perfect bulletin boards and things to be pretty. We just want our, our students, our children, to meet the person that they will be working with for the next school year, and to feel comfortable with that. It's been, you know, this will be my third open house, and the past two have been nothing but helpful for, for my, for my children, for me, you know, I, I am a little bit selfish in this. I want to see the person that's going to be working with my, with my, my, um, son, because we sent him on the bus. I don't want to be waiting a couple of weeks to get that face-to-face. And, and I, I just think it's, I think it's a really important aspect, and I think it's a great thing that our school offers. And to kind of take that away this year, I, I don't know that that's the right call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. I'm Shannon McLaughlin, I also have two children in the school district. One is going to the middle school, and one is going to be moving over to the Indian Head as a second grade student. Not much to add to what Melissa said, I think she captured it well. I would just say, I think the open house has proven to be a really effective strategy for managing those first-day jitters. You know, new parents in town, get to meet people, I think it just does something to relieve stress. And I would just say, I think you're getting more kids on the buses, fewer tears those first few days, by allowing them to meet the teacher. I heard like a few different personal stories about it over the past week, you know, as we just started talking to people, and someone said, you know, I had this teacher had a reputation for being really tough. My child was so nervous about to go into the school, then they met the person, and they put a personal connection there, and she eased his fears. So that child was able to get on the bus without an issue. I just think it sounds so small, but little things like this really help a wider population than you might realize. And I would just say, I think, building on what Melissa said, you have people who support the teachers there tremendously. We certainly are not the types to normally go against what the teachers want here, and that's not our intent. I think we're just asking for reconsideration, because it's just something that I think we want to prioritize, the children's anxiety in this case. Bulletin boards, to me, they're, they're nice, but it's not as important as just that personal connection, there's just no taking away from that. So if, you know, this could be considered, I think that would be helpful. I think the other thing that came up is just some technical things we've done in the district, which kindergarten students would get their bus passes. So you'd get this like little apple with a name and everything on it. Taking that away the first day, I'm not sure how we would get that information, because I know sometimes getting things through the mail, things can get confused. I just think the open house is another way of like making sure that we button everything up before the first day, so. Thank you for the, giving us a chance to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Wright, I'm also a Hanson resident. I have a, um, little boy going into second grade, and I have a fourth grader who's moving up to the middle school. second grade, and I have a fourth grader who's moving up to the middle school. I just want to also add that one of the things the kids get to do usually at open house is see the bus and get on the bus. So it alleviates that anxiety for them if they're kindergartners and haven't actually been on the bus before, you know, or see their big brother and sister get on it, but they, some kids have a lot of anxiety about that. And I know you guys all realize this, but the only kids in Indian Head that will have been in Indian Head are the kids who are in third grade now, going into fourth grade, kindergarten, first, and second and third grade. All those kids are at McQuan now. So they have very limited knowledge of the school. They have very limited, I mean, they went a couple weeks ago to go over and see the school. They've maybe been over there for a book fair, but they don't have any real sense of the space or where anything in the building is. Not to say that the idea of having some other sort of open house for them over the summer isn't a good idea. I actually don't necessarily think it's a bad idea. I just think for our children with so much change that they've gone through, really over the last four years in Hanson's school system, between the different principals and all the different changes that have happened, I think at this point in time, this is, I just don't feel like this is the best decision to change for them, when it's kind of a routine for them, to go there and meet their teachers the night before school. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Okay.
Robbie?
So a couple of things. First, the way I found out about it was from an email this morning. Chris, I know you got it, Bob, I know you got it. So I'm texting Bob going, "What's this?" So just for anybody else, I have a son that's going to be a sophomore, knows the high school inside now more than I wish he did, sometimes, but I've got a first grader that's going to Indian Head, third that's going to fourth, and fourth that's going to fifth at the middle school. I'm not so concerned with the fifth grader. They get to go see it. It's more parent anxiety that happens with fifth grade than it is the kids that happens. As far as the bus goes, we don't want kids on the bus for what they learn, but anyway. I would much rather have the open house the way we've done it in the past. I guess my question is for Ruth and Jeff. I know we do professional development that first day or two ahead of time. Is there a way to, I don't know, modify that for the Indian Head school teachers, so that they can do, some of their setting up their classroom and stuff then? I mean, I know, I don't know whether teacher credit goes towards that or anything like that. I don't know anything about that. But are they able to, are we able to modify that, that at least the, and hopefully it doesn't create a union issue or anything, but that the Indian Head school teachers are exempt from it, are able to not attend it, so that they can nudge up their classroom, so that then we can do the open house like we've done in the past? And I don't know if that's a logistical nightmare for you.
I think, you know, opportunity is, we can modify everything. The one person that's not here is the new principal, and I want to get her involved. So I hear your concerns, and I want to bring in Jill, and we can power and figure it out. And I have two elementary principals here that can help solve that problem as well. You know, we can modify things. My concern is for the people on the ground who are unpacking those pink bins, some of which have 80, okay? They're supposed to have, you know, I have five.
They're supposed to have eight.
You know, but we have a tremendous amount there. We can try to figure something out. If this is something that is strongly, if parents feel strongly about it, hey, we want to do the best for our kids, especially around social-emotional. That's one of our pillars. That's what we want to do. I want to find a balance. So I hear exactly what you're saying. I want to bring it back. Guess what's tomorrow, the last day of school?
Right.
So, you know, I'm trying to, we're going to juggle some things, so I can't have an answer for folks tomorrow. I need to process this, get some information, brainstorm what we want to do, and then get the information out there. It will get out there. It'll be out there probably via email, and it'll probably come out on social media, what we're going to do, and have some modifications. Maybe we'll do another thing over the summer as well. Maybe we'll do traditional. Maybe we'll do a couple of other things to make that, because I heard you clear about the transition piece and the anxiety piece. So I don't want to make a decision for Jill. I don't want to set her up with a faculty that we've already kind of said, "This is the groundwork that we had," but I also can go to the faculty and say this, "We've heard some concerns from some parents, because we didn't communicate well enough with the community in May when we had this conversation." So we're going to stop that. We'll own that piece of it, and then try to make do as we go. Now, probably not going to please everybody, all right?
No, no matter what you're doing.
We're going to put something together for, in the best interest of kids, that's going to work. With our association, I'm not worried about the contract piece. We'll make teachers whole if we need to do that.
Okay.
You know what I mean? That'll be something. It's just the physical nature of getting people in the building in August to unpack those boxes. Now, to answer your question, Bob, we sent over some AP language kids who needed some community service last week to McQuan to move boxes. We got, we got boys and girls moving boxes to help out. True community effort. But I need to make sure, because teachers do have plans, and they've been asked to give up a day in August, we're compensating them with a PD, with a personal day. However, we all know that when we're on vacation, we're in vacation mode, and it's hard to break away from family. Now, I might ask them, "Can you do a half, another half? Or can you do another?" We'll work that out financially. We'll feel it out. But I think it's an opportunity to have this discussion with Jill, get some community input. We have that. We've heard. And now we have to make some decisions on how to help.
And she's aware that there is this concern, because Jeff and I both communicated with her today, so--
No, no, that's fine.
And she wants to get off to the best possible start, too.
Yeah, no, I get that.
Okay.
And I know she's going to have an op, she's going to open it up to parents over the summer, so it's a meet and greet for her. So it's not, you're not walking in the first day and saying, "Hi, I'm so-and-so." She's going to have that. In fact, probably all four principals are going to open up to the community to say, "Hey, this is who I am, and this is who we are."
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. Thank you all for coming.
Please keep us abreast, whether it's via email, and also with the community piece, too.
Yeah. Yeah, he's a good Twitter.
Thank you.
Yeah, he'll keep you in the loop.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Just very quickly, to finish up, a couple of things. We also have two searches that are ongoing for assistant principal at Indian Head and assistant principal at Whitman Middle School. They are making excellent progress, and I assume we'll have a communication for you within the next week or so, provided things go according to plan. Every year, we talk to you about the summer programs. I'm certainly not going to go through all of them, but I will let you know that this building is going to be used close to 100%, because it does have central air. It's a very wonderful place to do summer learning. The extended school year program will be here. We're going to be having a variety of other things. We have our traditional science camp that John Rosen does. Julie Julia, one of our business teachers, will be doing work with kids on 3D printing. We have our summer grant program for the, that Maureen Leonard heads up. She's talked to you about that before. We also have numerous sports camps, and we also host DARE. In addition to that, Camp Conley, I see Karen, who's the head camper, will be at Camp Conley, and that's a really cool program for kids. It's also partially funded by Title I, so it does provide students with enrichment, but also with support skills as well. So we've got that going on. Hanson Middle School is having a program in the mornings for kids that are doing more athletic-type things. Whitman Middle doesn't have a program, but Bill Tranter's happy to take any Whitman Middle students who might want to go to Hanson Middle for those programs. So a variety of things going on this summer. We also, as you know, have a growing number of English-language learners. We get grant money. It's through a federal grant called Title III that North River coordinates for us, and we're going to be running summer English camp. And Mike Caponegro, who is one of our ESL tutors, has a wife who's a graphic artist, and she created this, just while I'm showing it. But we have that to help our students who need to really work on their English skills, so that they'll be in good shape over the summer. So there's a lot going on. When you come up to this building in July, it looks like school's in full session, so it'll be a busy time. Ernie Sandland's been working with his group to make sure things are clean and ready to go for the start of the school. I just wanted very quickly to give you an update on the regional agreement amendment. We have contacted the town administrators in both Whitman and Hanson, as well as the chairs from the boards of selectment, to ensure that they now take the approved agreement that you all voted, that all three legal councils have looked at, and that they need to revote it. So that's something we need to pay attention to, make sure it gets on the agenda for the, both of the boards. And the plan would be that at their next scheduled town meetings, this will then be voted. Department of Education has already approved it. So just wanted to keep you updated on that that's been done. And we did Scoreboard project, and we are up to job descriptions with Chad.
Okay. In your packet, you found two job descriptions. They're drafts. Chad, do you need those voted this evening?
Please.
Okay. I entertain a motion to accept the first job description.
So moved.
Second. Associate Director--
Director of Technology Services.
Associate Director.
Yes.
Associate Director.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion. Motion, do.
I did.
Ellie did.
No, it came from--
Who seconded?
Robbie.
Robbie. Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Next position?
Data Specialist.
Is a data specialist. I entertain a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Ellie votes.
You got it? Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
One more.
Information System Specialist.
What did I do? Information System Specialist. I entertain a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Acceptance of gifts.
Do the vehicle.
Oh, yeah.
You want to do this one. This is the green project.
The green project, if you look in your packets, it's about a 15-page about efficiency, green vehicles. I believe Whitman has already accepted this policy.
Well, yeah, but Whitman's may be a little bit different. I know Hanson tabled it last night, so--
Oh, they did.
I'm going to make a motion that we table it.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks, Robbie.
Seconded. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I didn't see who seconded.
Danny and Robbie.
We'll revisit it.
Yeah, they tabled it until they get more information, because then it's probably a good idea to bring the town administrator.
We did this several years ago for Whitman, but it didn't require a vehicle efficiency policy. We had to do a letter that we found the other day that we did, but we didn't do that. But this is something that would be very beneficial to the district if the town of Hanson determines to go with being a green community, because it helps us.
Part of it is, Ruth, it's very expensive to do.
I know. I know it is.
Okay, donations. School committee, Sue Moss would like to donate the following items for use at the Whitman-Hanson Regional School System. Canon EOS 50D body, serial number 09205004041, value 250. Canon EF-S, 24-millimeter F28 lens, serial number 5101111871, value 130. This is a pretty high-end camera. I do some stuff for 50D. It's a pretty big-money camera. I entertain a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. We don't have any field trips. We have no surplus?
I think we're fine.
Okay. We just had a meeting, so I'd entertain a motion to table subcommittee reports.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. We need to, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session, and I'll read you the purpose. Purpose number six is to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, the land is adjacent to the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School, and yes, I do declare that. Also, second purpose is going to be, purpose number three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation of position of the public bodily body, and the chair so declares, and I do, and we will give updates for B, C, and D units.
Second.
Voiceful.
Yes.
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 When we come out of executive session, the only vote we will be entertaining is to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.